Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Planning Board Meeting, the town of Armenia. I'm going to start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the good public which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the living, the just, and all. If there's an emergency, exit the door, take a left, and we'll all go out accordingly. Hopefully, there's nothing. Regular meeting, and first on the agenda is Silo Ridge new staff. Patrick, you want to throw it at us? What's going on with that?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Deputy Chair, Planning Board Members, and staff, thank you for allotting some time this evening. I know this is not a usual item on your agenda, but we did feel it's important. There's been a change in the management staff at Silo Ridge. Ongoing project for 10 years, lots of history to it. And this change is nothing out of the norm. It's a very large development project. Quite often through the course of a development project, there's the development side. Project reaches stabilization where Silo Ridge now is now. It's about 50% complete. And a new management team takes on the task of running the operations on a day-to-day basis and getting it to closure. So it's nothing new. There's nothing that's been happening at Silo Ridge. There's no change in the ownership structure. Maybe ownership structure, but ownership has not changed across the board. And we thought it was important to get the new management team here. There's always been questions about who is doing what at Silo and how things are operating. We thought we'd take a moment this evening to introduce the new management team. We have lots of things coming up in the near future. And once again, thank you. With that, I would like to introduce the project president, Sal Sherrill. And Sal will introduce additional members of the management team as he proceeds through here, and then I'll come back up a little later.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, Board Members. First, I want to start, introduce myself, Sal Sherrill, and tell you how exciting it is to be up here. I grew up not too far away in Columbia County. My parents, we spent a lot of the year up there, and hadn't been up here in quite a while. But, you know, turning that corner and seeing what Armenia was really eye-opening and just really pretty. So, thank you for everything that you guys and the town has done. It's really, it is a special place. I just want to introduce our team. So I'm with Discovery Land Company. I worked with Discovery previously on some projects, and then joined a little over a year and a half ago, and officially got involved with the project probably sometime in January of this year with the transition that actually took place late July, early August. So, well, I'm familiar with the project. Really, the transition recently took place. But I just, just going in order here, just so you guys are all, you know, aware. Mike Clark, who joins us, who's going to be running construction for us. He comes, he's been with Discovery for a long time. He is formerly was at the Yellowstone Club and was really involved in that development. And then to his right is Richard Frick, who is our new CFO, who has recently relocated up here. He's new to the company. Worked for a big shopping center developer before and came highly recommended through someone that I worked with. I think you probably know Michael Ryan at this point, who is our general manager at Silo Ridge and runs all of the operations. He's been up here for how long? Five, four years? Four years. And Zach Winnick, who is the newest member to our team, who I worked with previously when I was at Howard Hughes before this. And he's our Senior Vice President of Strategic Operations and Development. So as you can see, we put together a serious team. But I think that, you know, obviously, what we're developing here is for generations to come, you know, at Silo Ridge and making sure that it fits properly in. And I've done this before where I've come into these projects half-baked or where there's a transition that needs to happen. And I've also come in recently to one where it was, you know, the us-versus-them mentality in New York. And hopefully, I left there where my first meeting, when I went in with the City of New York and a mayor and Borough President said, "Why would you join this, you know, in the middle of this mess?" And I think we left sort of working together in a very successful way and got a project developed, and we hope to continue the relationship. I think for here, what I like to sort of, you know, run things on, it's not an us-versus-them. We want to make it all successful for everyone. We know it's hard. There are ups and downs, and there are challenges. And not that it's gone poorly before, but it's a different kind of relationship in my mind going forward. I'm very transparent, so that's why we're in here before we present anything and before, I don't think there's any big changes coming, so don't be worried about that. But I wanted to really introduce the team and say, "We want to listen, we want to hear. We're not going to come and ask for forgiveness. We're going to ask for permission. We're going to do it the right way." Not that it has or hasn't been done that way before, but it's important. And it's important that we effectively work together in achieving these goals. I know that you got, you know, this team that's, I'm talking in front of you, been tasked with protecting, you know, the community members and the people here in large, and it's a big responsibility. I have sat on planning boards and zoning boards before, so I know it. And I take the responsibility seriously. And I know there's a lot of other agencies, I'm sure, within the town over the next years that we'll be dealing with and we'll be treating them the same. So I do believe that we can highly, you know, work together efficiently and effectively, similar to your relationship with the members of the community. We're a business. We run as a business, but, you know, sometimes those can conflict with each other. But we will do our best to work with the town and to, again, have an open dialogue and work together in what I think is a collaborative way and a way that, you know, moves things forwards productively. So that's why we're up here, just to introduce everyone. I am going to hand it over to my colleague, Mike Rock. We can answer any questions now or at the end. Mike is going to sort of walk you through some of the things that we were planning on submitting, but really, you know, when we were doing it, I said, "Wait. Let's go in there, show our faces and tell..." So, and one last thing is our partners, Stoneleaf, who I know you worked with before, they remain our partners, but we are effectively taking over now, going forward, all the development and operations moving forward. So that's, there's no change in ownership or structure other than that we will be managing the operations and the development moving forward.
First of all, thank you guys for spending the time to kind of listen and really meet the team that we put together here. More than anything, we really wanted to communicate to you guys. We intend to really seek your input as we continue to plan for Silo Ridge. And more than anything, we've kind of started to go through a needs assessment based on our current membership and how it's evolved over time and really since the development has continued to evolve. And so with that, we're coming up with kind of a new concept and plans overall for the project and just making sure it's really a thoughtful design. And really want to seek your input related to kind of what fits in the town of Armenia and what doesn't, and make sure we're doing the right thing. And ultimately, we want to make the project successful, but at the same time, figure out ways to elevate the entire town and surrounding community because the key is we're all successful together. And so we want it to be valuable for our members, but we want to support the community and make it all kind of fit together, if that makes sense. And so really for us is making sure that we overall are really listening at this point and making sure more than anything that you guys are aligned with what our strategy is for Silo Ridge. And so, Patrick, I'll get into some specifics coming up from a timeline standpoint. Our first kind of concept planning that we want to submit in the next few weeks here is really a couple of condo buildings and not really deviating much from the original plan. And then we'll start to get into an overall concept review and really look at density and planning and how it should fit into the project as opposed to what might have been previously planned. So the other thing I wanted to point out too, and I don't know if you guys are amenable to this, but we'd like to invite all of you to come and visit Silo and see what it is and get an understanding of what the project has and what's progressed there. I don't know how long it's been since any of you guys have been there, but we'd love to extend the invitation at least. So I'll turn it back over to Patrick.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Chair, we do understand if to visit Silo may require some form of a special meeting so that you don't have a small corps doing something. And we'd be happy to organize that and work with you at a time suitable for that. Mike had mentioned some upcoming projects. The second item on the agenda is a withdrawal letter for the Core Condos. One of the new submissions coming up, and I'll address that as that agenda item when we get there. But in lieu of that submission, we'll be submitting for Condos D and E, which was part of that former submission in the next few weeks here. It's part of the overall planning process. There's identified need. It's the right time to be doing that project. It fits well with the condos, 1, 2, 3. It makes sense. It's eliminating the townhouses, still no change in that. But it's been reduced, you know, under the new management from. It was 13 units previously. Now it's going to be 10 units in Condos D and E. They're pulling back on Condos A, B, and C. B and C will follow sometime maybe in '26, depending upon overall planning and how things work through the process. Once again, they're going through a whole plant, new planning process for the, it's called the Core Condos because there were five condo buildings there. So they're rethinking the entire strategy in that area. D and E are staying. That, they're fixed, and that's not changing. That's why they're submitting that now. But they're still working on A, B, and C across the board relative to client demands and otherwise. So that's one project that will be coming up in the near future. The General Store, which is, seems like it was a forgotten element of the master plan. We've been working on that. That would be something that would be following. We're not sure from a timing standpoint if it's going to be before B and C or following B and C, but it is in the planning works. It hasn't been forgotten. We acknowledge the need for it, and we're in the planning process. In addition, we'll probably be taking a hard look at the master plan. We've done a number of revisions, though minor, to the master plan over the past five years. And it's probably time to comprehensively incorporate all those revisions into a revised master plan to get in front of the community, as well as any, you know, near-term, next 10-year planning elements. You know, if elements are going to be moving around a little bit, instead of incrementally doing them continuously over the next 10 years, we'll try our best. Though we can't see into the future that far, we'll try our best to incorporate as many of the potential changes as possible in the updated master plan. So we do have a lot coming. There's a lot of activity at Silo on the single-family lots, and, you know, we fully expect that to move forward. And with that, Mr. Chairman, you know, we'd be happy to answer any questions of the Board. We, you know, quite often, I've been here before you, and you've asked me questions that I, you know, would refer back to Oz down the road. I didn't know the answer. So tonight, we have the opportunity with the whole team here. Please feel free to ask them all the questions you asked me that I couldn't answer.
One question I have for you. What's going to go on where the fire happened? The big fire? What's going to happen in that area?
So Building 3, 4, we're still negotiating, believe it or not, with our insurance adjuster.
I do believe that.
We haven't gotten, we haven't even gotten their adjustment yet. We filed ours, and they haven't even done that. We are sitting down in November for mediation with them. The current plan, obviously, is 3, 3. I mean, it's, the inside needs to be rebuilt, but to leave that structure. I would like to look at 3, 4 and revisit it to see if it, you know, it could be maybe pushed a little somewhere and be maybe not as tight. The Core got brought up because I felt like it was, the reason we just came out with D and E is I felt like A was just way too large. It's too big of a building. It needs to be, I call it, you know, decor a little bit.
Okay.
Obviously, we need the square footage to sell, so we're going to have to figure out. And that's what we're working on to come back. And I understand there's view corridors and all that, and that's what we want to work with you on. But it was starting to look too tight in there for me. And the problem is B and C really can't be built without A. So the reason we at least know what we're going to do on A. So that's why we're really, and to me, 3, 4 also fits into that a little because it is right there also. So we're working with the architecture firms and the layout firms, but in the meantime, you know, other than rebuilding 3, 4, we don't have a lot of product left. The good news is we've been selling some lots, but we don't have, there's still a lot of people that want, you know, condos. So that's why we proposed doing this D and E within the footprint that was originally contemplated.
Thank you all for coming. I think Silo is an important part of Armenia, and I want to just make one suggestion. Rather than refer to the people who live there as members, which sounds exclusive, aren't they just residents of Armenia? I would refer to them as fellow residents.
Uh huh. Great point.
Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Very well said.
I echo Ken. Thank you for coming. I think this is, it's very nice to meet everybody, and we appreciate your time for coming here. One of the things that we've talked about quite a bit is this sort of amorphous structure over there, like who's in the HOA, what is the management structure, what's the relationship with Stoneleaf, what's the relationship with Keen Stud, what's the relationship with the Keen Stud Equestrian Facility? And so if there was an opportunity for you guys to give us sort of an org chart so that we can better understand where those organizations overlap, who's on those different committees and boards and who's making the decisions?
It must have been in our meeting right before this.
I think it would be super helpful to us to know that.
So, us too. So we are relooking at all of it, and we're revisiting it. We just went through changing the HOA. We're going to be taking some of the, you know, the Stoneleaf people off the HOA. And we will share that with you as soon as, we have our proposal slate for the HOA. We have a Design Review Committee Board that we're changing as well and any other boards that we have there. So we'll definitely put that together. Happy to share with you the organizational structure. As far as the Equestrian Center, we'll put this all right in view. We have no ownership in the Equestrian or Keen Stud whatsoever. That is all Stoneleaf. We have a lease agreement. It's not really even a lease. It's a use and occupancy agreement to be able to use the Equestrian Center. And it's just based on, you know, just actually, you know, just based on a use and occupancy, based on number of riders and how much we use it over the year. But happy to put it all together and share with you.
Yeah, I think that'd be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One thing you might want to include in that. I noticed on the filings of one of the local 501(c)(3)'s, Silo is the major fund, or Discovery Land or Silo is the major funder. One of your people sits on their board. It's just that kind of thing.
Yeah. We are equally revisiting that as we speak. As you know, we're getting ready for our first, I guess, our, the new leadership first fundraiser, which will be next Friday with the Armenia Foundation. And then obviously, we're revisiting the Silo Ridge Foundation as well. Our Chair and owner, Mike Meldman, has recommitted to the Silo Foundation as well as the Armenia Foundation. So it's a big part of the transition as we go forward to make sure that we, it's something that all the Discovery properties believe in. You have to support the local non-for-profits as well, so I think you'll see that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Perfectly good. Good deal. Patrick, get back up again.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
I hope you found this helpful this evening, and I hope it'll be helpful as we move forward on some exciting projects into the future. That wraps up everything on our side. We'll follow through and get the org charts over to you. It might take a little time, as Sal indicated. They're in the process of doing the org charts internally, so they got to get those finished up first. But we'll follow through and make sure you receive those.
Okay.
All right. And that would complete item number one, Mr. Chair, unless there's any other?
There is no other question, so we're good.
Would you like me to move on to number two while I'm standing?
Yes, indeed, of course. You the man did it.
So item number two is Core Condo. It was a submission that was made 18 months ago, plus or minus. We, I have submitted a letter on behalf of Silo Ridge Ventures to withdraw that submission. The new team looked at the plans, looked at what was proposed, wanting to take a step back from such a large project including buildings A through E, narrow the submission down to a finite element, be it D and E. One note as part of that, we, Silo has a temporary gym right like where D and E is going to go ultimately. It's a temporary facility that was put there, I don't know, five years ago, I'm guessing, for the residents of Silo Ridge to use while they're waiting for the other facilities to be built. One of the things we'd like to try to accomplish, of course, we're submitting, be it Friday or two Fridays, following this, for Condos D and E to be scheduled at the next planning board hearing. We'd like to work with the Board and let you know that it is our intent to move that temporary facility from Point A to Point B. We're going to put it on top of the tennis courts. At this point, there are no permits for it because it was a temporary facility. So we'd respectfully request, you know, the Board give consideration to that. And over the next two-week period, I can submit a formal letter notifying that we're going to move the trailer facility from Point A to Point B on the site. It's temporary in nature. Once again, once Siland is completed, which is not part of Silo Ridge, the temporary facility is going to disappear. So disappear off of Silo Ridge sometime in 2025. But it's just temporary. Need to get it moved really soon because the people are going to be coming back Thanksgiving, Christmas time, and we're trying to get it organized and things in an orderly, productive manner out there. So to accomplish that, I don't know if it's as simple as possibly submitting a letter to the Board identifying that we're going to be in the process of moving the temp facility to Point A, to Point B, or if you need additional information associated with it.
Would you rely on you, Ken?
All the bad stuff falls on me. It is a temporary facility. It's been there since the inception of this whole thing. It's where the former clubhouse used to be, kind of tucked down in the middle of the site. It was originally used as the initial staging area. Then they grew out of it, and then they, I think they ultimately settled and put the gym in there because it was conveniently located for everyone. The proposal now is, if you're familiar, on the other side, where they were going to, there was talk about moving the spa and doing this wonder thing over by those lots. They actually have tennis courts. The tennis courts were approved. They have a parking area. They're all equipped. What they'd like to do is temporarily take the parking, take the tennis courts out of service and place these trailers there. It's kind of like almost a no harm, no foul. But again, it's temporary. So the way this has been treated kind of in the past is they would submit a letter request with some sporting documentation and give you a timeframe, and we would go from there for a temporary measure. I think the utilities are already there. Water and sewer hookups are there because they're there for the tennis courts. Everything's there, so they would just use it.
Parking is there for golf carts, for people attending. Yes, yes, sir.
So these are trailers? Well, it's two questions, actually. Is it trailers?
They're not trailers. They're, well, they're...
They're bigger than a trailer?
Those of us in the construction business, have you ever seen the double-wide construction trailers on a site? They're, that's essentially what they are. They're temporary, they're courtful offices.
Yes, that I understand, but they're big.
Just hang on. What's on?
They're big, so people can go in them.
Oh, yes, they are.
So my real question is, I drive 22 almost every day of the week.
Do you see them?
And I see the tennis courts. Are we going to see these? That's the question.
They're behind the trees. I don't know how you'd see the tennis courts.
It's not the same location?
No. No, I don't know how you could see.
No, you can see them as you drive up.
Where those tennis courts are. Oh, you're talking about Siland.
This is Siland.
Okay, that's what, that's not what I needed to know. Thank you.
That's why. No. And it's a shame people are not as familiar. But the family barn, if you know where that location is, it's kind of diagonally across from the family barn. It's tucked behind hills.
It would probably be, it would probably be a good idea if everybody pays a visit because this is one of the real hidden areas. You can't even see the tennis courts if you drive on, what, I forget the name of that road there.
Wood Duck.
Wood Duck Road, yes. If you drive there, you can barely see the tennis courts because they're kind of notched into the hill, if you will. So the road is slightly higher, the tennis courts are down. Then there's all the trees, and a portion of the groundskeeping facility is tucked in there as well. So you wouldn't, chances are, once these trailers are set, I don't even think the people across the street at the barn are going to see them for the most part.
And in fact, what, because, you know, to make this as temporary as possible, those trailers have been in use for five or six years now. And they are aging, and what is under consideration is a tent facility, you know, like the tents you see for the major events, something of that nature. They're really temporary. I mean, this is going to be a temporary facility. So they're going to switch out the...
The only thing I will remind you of, tent, because I've done it before, is you're going to need to buy a tent that has snowload capabilities or you're going to be in big trouble. So, and I've used them on other facilities quite a bit.
Are those tents going to be sort of like a dome?
No.
Like internally illuminated like a dome?
No, no, no. Nowhere near the size of the domes, which is item number three on the agenda. Nowhere, I mean, we're talking about something that's going to be 15, 25 feet high, so...
It might be helpful, given that, right? Like, given that it's going to look a little bit different for you to just provide some images or some plans or sections or something so that the Board can take a look, just have an idea of what we're...
I'll incorporate that with a letter so that you can see what a typical facility might look like. I'll do a cut of a site plan for it, showing its location and a couple of utility connections. And so we appreciate that because we don't want to go through a large process for this temporary, moving a temporary facility from Point A to Point B that's already developed and covered with pavement and otherwise. So thank you for that. And we'll get that information to you immediately.
I'll send you some tenure file, too.
That would be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to number three now.
Wait, I have a question. One of the things that we talked about when you had originally submitted the Core and Spa site plans and spa site plans was you were retiring, but I guess they sort of pulled you back in, but, sorry.
I did retire from VHB. I'm happily retired now for 18 months, somewhere like that. Reason I'm still around right now until they get tired of me and set me adrift, during the transition with all the history I've had at Silo Ridge, it's, I felt it was incumbent upon me to stick around through the transition period until everybody had their feet on the ground and knew where everything was, plant files, and all the consultants that they had been working with through the years. So when these gentlemen are tired of me and set me adrift, I'll stop in one last time to say goodbye.
I was just kidding.
But I did retire, yes.
What you're learning is the true value of corporate memory.
Institutional knowledge.
Institutional knowledge.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. That wasn't actually my question. My question was, when we were first talking about this a while ago, as part of that application, you were going to come in with a sort of where we are, what we've built, and then a sort of comparison table to conditions of approval and secret conditions, just so that we can sort of get a status, right, current status of the project, what we thought we were going to build, what we actually built, what we still have to build, and then tie that to any additional analyses that were required as part of the secret findings. And so maybe now is a great opportunity for that to happen, too, as you're sort of reevaluating what's going on, for us to also better understand what's happened, what's still is going to happen, that sort of thing.
It's amazing that you suggested that because I'm actually working on that right now. The submission is generally complete for condos D and E. We'll submit that and present it, and then as a supplemental submission following that, we'll actually be submitting a plan showing what is built, what's vacant, what's under, you know, what potentially may be built in the next couple of years, update the unit count across the board wherever it exists, you know, through calendar year 2025, and you'll have that, you know, to look at because we need to incorporate D and E in it as well because we've just knocked that down from what it was at 13 units to 10 units. So we're in the process of updating that.
Yeah, and that's great. And I think also providing, sort of, there were a lot of assumptions made about revenue gener, property tax revenue generated, traffic that would be generated, that, so again, it's an opportunity for everyone to understand, you know, what we thought would happen versus what has actually happened, and what has the potential to happen in the future. I think it's, you know, behooves us to get our, you know, get our arms around all that, especially with the new management.
Absolutely, and it may need to be summarized at the end exactly to some of the points you're making here, like, you know, the original fiscal impact statement, though it would not, I don't believe, and I hope you would agree, it should not be part of the D and E submission, it should be kind of a standalone supplemental.
No, card. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just an aside, it seems that we've been talking about a lot of the same things in general, like the reorg and Siland as opposed to Silo, and my not understanding that those weren't the tennis courts. I've just, you know, I'm new to the board, but I'm also pretty new to Aminia, and so I would think that my fellow residents, as Ken said, don't know. We think it's all Silo. So it might behoove you that when you're doing all this, and now that we're televised, so that people in Aminia would understand that there are two organizations, that this is what's going on, so it doesn't become elitist. Just a suggestion.
Understood. And we can work on that summary and incorporate that as part of the overall summary with the build-out to date, so, thank you.
I have a question, and a lot of this, almost all of it predates my membership on the board. I assume when you're talking about building out the market, which you mentioned, or the gym, that when you start construction, or when you plan these various sites, you're building them for the complete development of Silo, that it's for even those properties you haven't sold yet, it will be able to handle the entire project, and you won't be doing it in pieces, like, we have 50% sold, we'll build for 70%, and then we'll add 30% when we sell the 30%. So that we can approve something and know, great, the gym's done, we never have to hear about it again.
That absolutely happens. If you look at like the family barn out there, the family barn was designed and intended to service 245 residences that were approved at Silo Ridge. It's fully constructed, the pools are fully constructed, the slides are there, it's fully done. Of course, Silo Ridge Ventures, you know, aspires to get the rest of the people in there using the facilities. So all the facilities on-site are designed for the full build-out, and things that, for example, sewer treatment plants or water systems, they were phased because you can't necessarily bring something online for 245 families when you only have 120. So they worked out phasing plans for those elements, but the entire complex was designed for full build-out.
When it came to this board, however, as Patrick said, the utilities, for instance, were phased, but the approval was given for the ultimate build-out. So if you were to look at what was on the plan set as it was approved, it was the full-blown sewage treatment facility. If you were to look at the water treatment building, if you were to walk in there, it's quite confusing, but it's built out for the full production of Silo Ridge. They don't have to do anything else because that's the only way the health department would do it. And certain of these things, for instance, the wastewater treatment plant, you have to phase it because it requires a certain amount of biologic material to properly function. And the last thing you want to do is have to buy it on the outside and feed it to keep it going. So what we did is, during the approval process, the health department approved the overall, that's what was issued, but within that overall footprint, we're only going to build this portion because that's all that's necessary for phase one. And, but, everything is on the plan, and I think they actually built most of the structures and just have them disconnected right now. So it's not like you got to go back and build the structure because what they found is it gets in the way.
They're nice people, we just don't need to see them once a month.
Understood. But I can remember when you did see them once a month, more frequently at times.
One more question. So the facility, I've always wondered this, and since you all are here, there's a shooting facility that's up sort of on the western, eastern edge of Keen Stud that I think is Silo Ridge's shooting range, or, I don't know what it is, trap and skeet or something? Is it, in fact, owned by Silo Ridge?
I'm going to have to defer to somebody because I don't have the slightest...
The clay shooting, is that what you're referring to?
I don't know what it, it's shooting.
Clay shoot, yeah. Yeah, no, that's part of the equestery that we rent from Keen Stud.
So that's not a Silo Ridge facility?
Correct.
You don't own it, you don't rent it, you don't operate it?
No, we do, we do rent. We have a use in occupancy. We don't rent, we don't, we don't own it, we have a use in occupancy to use it.
As a gun range, as a shooting range?
Along with them.
Okay.
Correct. I don't know exactly, but we have other things up there, you know, there's dogs and there's other outdoor activities up there.
There's what?
It's like a dog run and all kinds of stuff up there.
Okay.
It's all news to me.
Yeah, me too.
Because remember, Keen, the original Keen Stud proposal was done under, as an agricultural facility, so according to your code, you don't have a lot of say.
Correct.
If you remember, we had that long, drawn-out discussion, so they grudgingly gave us a basic footprint, but that's all we, that's all we could ask for under Ag and Markets Law.
Yeah, no, I understand, but it's more of like a tactical range of some sorts, not like sporting clays and skeet?
Michael?
Yeah, thanks for asking. Actually, we do not...
Excuse me, sir? Can you, you got to go up and use the microphone, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Michael Ryan, I'm the operator guy.
Hi.
And in fact, one of the services that we offer our residents is an outdoor experience that has a variety of action-related sports. So yes, we have six clay shooting stands, we have two archery longbow, we have an archery target in the woods system with 3D targets, we have axe throwing, and we have a little paintball range where we can have groups of kids shoot paintballs at one another.
And that's on your property, or that's the one that's up by Keen Stud?
As Saul had stated, we're leasing that property, and we are allowed to operate that. The landlords that we lease it from allow us to operate that for our residents. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay, so skeet shooting, archery, axe throwing, paintball.
Exploding target.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Hey, that's it for number two, now we'll move on to number three.
Move on to number three. This is Siland, I don't know if you guys want to stick around or not. So for Siland, I submitted a letter to the planning board. I was here two months ago to finalize the approval of Siland and the domes, and we agreed that we would be given two weeks prior to the opening date of the domes to install them and bring them up so that they could be opened on November 1st. To my fault, I did not know that these things were scheduled a year out in advance. I don't operate these things, so I thought you'd call somebody up and they put a dome up. It was scheduled for installation on October 7th for this year. The arrangements were made last year, it's eight days prior to what we agreed upon in the approval. The management team at Siland has made arrangements with the vendor who installs it, so this will never happen again. Nobody knew about this a year ago when it was being installed. So moving forward, it won't be installed in 2025, '26 or otherwise, until after the 15th, but we'd respectfully request the opportunity to, we're not going to activate it, we're not going to use it before November 1st, it's just a matter of the guys coming in, installing the HVAC equipment and uploading the dome, and we'd respectfully request permission to accomplish that, though a little short-sighted on my side two months ago.
John, anything on that?
I'm going to defer to Paul on this one.
We have no objection. I think it's just administrative detail, and I don't think the planning board even needs to take any formal action on it.
And realistically, it's a first-year hiccup, and despite Patrick's optimism, there's still a bunch of work that has to be completed before they can operate those domes. It's just not the magic date of November 1st. And Patrick and I did have a discussion on it. All that work is in process, they're waiting for materials and equipment, so it's expected to be completed in advance, but...
The only thing I would suggest, and I can work with John on this if the board is undermined, is just to, maybe a letter from your consultants that basically confirms that this is not a precedent for the future because the resolution is clear about the two-week before November deadline. And we can do that, get that out to them.
Okay, it's open for discussion.
I just had one question. Just to be clear, it's actually 10 days, not eight days, but I have no problem with it because these things happen. I can't remember, what about taking them down? Is that two-week also?
Yes, it is.
And so this is not going to affect taking down this year?
And we'll make that clear in the letter.
That's fine, that's fine. Thank you, that's all.
The only additional thing that I would mention is that we are working very closely with Patrick to make sure that the conditions of the resolution that the board approved are adhered to. Their attorney had come and had asked me whether we were ready to sign the site plans. John reminded them that they had a condition of resubmitting a site plan set for his review so he could make sure that everything was the way it should be before the chairman signed it. And he, we wanted, that came in around the same time as the request letter, so we wanted to make sure that John had done that review. He has done that review, he can report on it. I think he's found that it's substantially what it needs to be for the chair to sign it. And so at that point, apart from making sure that their escrow account is all paid up, I think that we'll be in a position where the chairman could sign those site plans, and then we'll start the process. We're working with the code officer to make sure that all the building permits are issued properly, the certificates of occupancy are issued in accordance with the resolution, and there's full compliance in that project going forward.
Now, to extend this, we've got to do a motion to accept this, correct?
To...
To change.
Oh, you don't need to, if you like.
Okay, that's fine with me, I'm asking.
We'll get a letter out to them, though.
Okay.
It's a first-year hiccup, it happens.
I understand, I just don't want to come back and bore you.
Nope, neither do I, because I get bit first.
Yeah? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I do apologize. On item number two, do you need to make a motion to withdraw further withdrawal? Because we also had requested as part of that letter that the fees, the application fees from the withdrawal application be applied to the new application coming in. I leave that to you, Attorney Van Cott, if they need to act.
I would suggest, you know, Judy, if you have a different feeling, I think they have the right to withdraw their application at any time, and we'll be getting the new application insured.
New application should come with a new application fee.
Yeah, right.
The escrow can be carried over.
Yep, no.
So you want a new application fee?
Yes.
Okay.
We've got to chop that, too, with all the phases.
No, we're fine with that. We requested, we have our answer. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time this evening, truly.
You're welcome. Thank you, thank you for coming in. Thank you all.
Yeah.
Nice meeting and greeting. On to number four, town Aminia proposed local law for cannabis, discussion of possible allowable locations per zoning code, recommendation to the town board. Do you have any, John, first? I'll start out with you.
Well, I got a whole bunch. And I guess maybe I took the charge a little too seriously, but I took a look at the draft law, and I think there's a couple things that I would offer for the board's consideration. I also checked around, I work in several communities, and there are other communities that have similar local laws, and I looked at, I looked at one of those, one that's actually functioning, and I've seen a couple examples of. But the first thing I would like to point out is, it's a special use permit by the town board. Normally with special use permits, there's also a site plan requirement, and what some of the other towns have done is they've left the special permit responsibility with the town board because it's a global town issue, but they have saddled the planning board with site plan approval. So I, this particular draft of the code is unclear as to what happens with site plan approval. So I think that's an improvement that needs to be placed in this code. It has to be addressed. The other thing here is, there's a couple circumstances in your code where the town board is actually the issuing agency for a special permit, notably the soil mining overlay. And there's a couple things here that I think also need to be looked at. Under your special permit provisions, there's a major project and a minor project. When it comes to, for instance, soil mining, that's automatically classified as a major project. The major, I don't mean to use the word major, the substantive difference between the two is minor projects do not, of necessity, require a public hearing. As a matter of fact, it's actually waived. Major projects require a public hearing, and I would think with this cannabis law provision that a public hearing might be something you want to entertain. The other thing is... So the other thing here is, there are specific provisions in your code, sections 12160 through 12164, which is how you process a special permit, and one of the key things, we just did one with Siland, is there's a whole series of findings that you need to make. There doesn't seem to be any language in this code to assist the town board in analyzing it and generating findings. So I think that's something that has to be done. And then, couple specific things, I find their site plan approval requirements to be slightly weak. There's a lot of issues that I know other towns wrestle with, the cannabis law, parking and how, you know, site staged, access, you know, all sorts of things, and I think while the code is a good beginning, I think it needs to be beefed up, and I think there's enough provisions in your code that you just need to borrow from some of these other ones. And like, there is no parking requirement in here, but if I understand how the cannabis operations work from other communities, you go in, you pick, it goes, somebody goes in a back room and does everything, and then you get a package that comes out. You know, it's not like there's display cases and you pick and choose, it's all done electronically with cameras and other things, and there's like, sometimes there's a waiting period. So in other words, you go in, make your choice, then you leave, there's security provisions. I guess what I'm thinking is, I find the draft law to be somewhat minimalistic, and I think it needs to be expanded to cover some broader issues. And I think one of the things that you folks probably need to wrestle with is, do you think you, as the planning board, are in a better position to evaluate the site plan issues? I'm not going to presume that you want to take on the town issue of where cannabis needs to go, but I do think you are better able to look at the issues related to site plan than perhaps the town board might be. So that's the only reason I would suggest you might want to look at that. And I'm sorry, Paul, I got carried away.
Oh, no, that's fine, that's great.
I got equally carried away, and so I have a bunch of comments, many of which are... And so I have a bunch of comments, many of which are the same ones that you brought up, but I think it's the point about us retaining site plan approval is a good one. I think as part of the special permit process, generally even for adult use or soil mining, the special, those special permits, which are, or things that are prohibited by the code when applied for and special permits are issued by the town board, we still retain plant, site plan approval, so I don't think that's an unusual...
No, and other towns do it right up front.
I did have just sort of a general policy, I guess, question about the process of if... Because that sort of sequence of events seems to be very, to me, it's very unclear whether or not somebody comes in here after they have already been granted a license by the state or whether or not a special permit, site plan approval by the town is required for somebody to go apply for a license from the state. Do they need local approval before the state will grant them the license?
I think the license comes first and then local approvals come. So I know what other communities have done is done a bifurcated process. In other words, you make your application for special use permit to the town board. The town board kind of sits on it and allows the planning board to do the review, I think even perform the seeker analysis. And then the planning board reaches a point where they say, okay, we have a site plan that's workable. Now go back to the town board and they send, you send your work to them. And then most of the towns require that a condition of issuance of the special permit is that you show up with your final license. Because I think what happens is you get in the queue, you're ready for your license, then you need all this other paperwork and you go back and then they issue the license. But it's not clear in your code how that all works together. And a lot of towns have basically said, you can reach just so far and as a condition of approval, you need to show up and give us your state licenses and then we sign you.
Fair enough, like the same way you would treat a zoning...
Yes.
A zone text amendment.
That is correct.
Okay. So as a sort of...
And I'm speaking as an engineer. Please understand, there's legal minds here that I...
That's good. I like that.
I think some of the other, you know, I submitted my comments, you guys have them, it's all redlined. I think, you know, it does seem that there's a bunch of terms in here that I don't really understand the difference between a cannabis retail dispensary, a registered organization with dispensing, and a micro business with retail dispensary. They seem to be three separate things, although they're treated exactly the same. So that kind of stuff, right, like the baseline, sort of how is this going to work, how are we defining it, how are they different? Is it a minor project? Is it a major project? What are the criteria for decision-making, not only for the special permit, but also for the site plan? All of those things, I think, need to be fleshed out a little bit better to the benefit of both applicants and, you know, the boards that are trying to review them, like if there's a real checklist of things that need to be accomplished.
That's kind of what I found.
Easy duty, right?
Yeah, because your code elsewhere, when you look at the code provisions for special use and site plan, it's already laid out there. So alls you got to kind of do is either hook it in by reference. So for instance, under soil mining, what you say is, hey, you have to comply with 160, 12160 through 12164, and oh, by the way, for the site plan, you have to comply with the requirements of 12165 through 1, you know. And all that contains what you just... So it's usually just kind of roping it in because what I found is your code, because as you state, there are other examples where you already do this, why reinvent the wheel for this?
Yeah.
It's smarter to just continue the policy and rope them all in together so that, you know, it becomes kind of a smooth process.
I think with it, so generally agree. There's a couple of other things that need to be fleshed out a little bit more, like what is included in the security plan, what is included in the decommissioning plan, like what are the requirements there? Who does this get circulated to? Is it just the sheriff's office, also mayor state police, right? That sort of thing, like, you know, I think we need to take a little bit better look. Also, I know that Rob has some comments about location, but I think as a fundamental threshold issue, there are separation requirements here, right? There's distance between the park and the facility, another facility and the facility, houses of worship, but the maps show sort of a radius around a point. And I think, and then describes how you would measure separation distances as like a straight, you draw a straight line from front door to front door, which I think is practically doesn't achieve the goal, which is to make sure that these facilities are separated from houses of worship. So it should presumably be from a property line or...
Well, actually...
It's not like as the crow flies.
Unfortunately, and I'll defer to Paul, but from what I understand, the New York State cannabis law has that in it. And apparently it has to do with what's described under that law as the entrance. So in other words, you don't measure distance from the back door, you measure distance from where the front door is, if you will, to some of these things. So there's, because I know a couple other towns go to great lengths to define how that measurement is calculated. And it's a little bit peculiar.
So, and I get that the state maybe has their own requirements, but I think it, as a town, we have the obligation and the responsibility.
You can be more stringent, you cannot be less.
To be more stringent. And so, you know, just by way of example, if you're putting the dispensary, you know, next to Dollar General, technically it's probably 200 feet from Temple Beth David from the front door, but it's literally like catty corner from the back. So like, that doesn't actually achieve the practical goal, which is to make sure that it's kind of far away from a house of worship, or kind of far away from the basketball courts, or kind of far away from town hall, or kind of far away from...
Well, I'll give you...
Any other facility where this could be compromising to folks that are going to do those things. So I'm just making the recommendation that rather than measuring something from one point of the front door to the point of the other front door, let's think about this logically.
I'll give you, I'll give you what another town has done, and I get the sense, and I'm not exactly sure, that it's taken right out of the state code, but it says, they give you measurements similar to yours. Says, "The measurements in this subsection shall be taken in a straight line from the center of the nearest entrance of the premises proposed to be operated as a retail dispensary to the center of the nearest entrance of a place of worship. The center of the nearest entrance of the nearest building on the school grounds. The center of the nearest entry or the nearest building of a public youth facility, or if no entrance exists, the nearest structure of such public youth facility. If no structure exists, on the grounds." You know, it, there's very specific, and that's just the way another town did it. So I think you're right, it has to be...
I don't get the...
We have to revisit just from, if you look at a house of worship, there are certain Jewish celebrations, one coming up in three, four weeks where you celebrate it outside.
Yeah.
And you build an outside structure. And that's going to be behind the synagogue and probably within 50 feet of your boundary. So I think we should consider property lines. We're going to have to come back, the town board...
And I would suggest that Paul probably should take a look at the state law to make sure that whatever we propose falls in the more stringent category.
Yeah, I think we should include the cemetery too.
Oh, right.
You know, you don't want to, when I was 12, I'd probably go into a cemetery if there was a dispensary. I also think that this is something that, hey, man, that was like 90 years ago, so at one point you get forgiven.
I'm not going to kid you, there was a time in my youth I was known to have an adult beverage in the back of the cemetery.
Sure, you know, and besides, it was medicinal then.
Okay.
I think we should also hear from Rosanna because the board has been trying to fast-track this. They put this, we are approving this and adjusting it, I mean, and making our recommendations concurrent with them. This, I go to the board meetings, they wanted to resolve this by the end of October.
From my review, and I don't think it's, that's impossible. I think we just need to get it to them quickly because I think it's really, in my mind, the bulk of my issues are simply cut and borrowed from other sections of the code in place here, either by reference or by specific language. A couple of the more sticking points, I think we need to see what the state law is so that we play off that.
Go ahead.
Could I say something?
Yes, of course.
Mentioning too long. So one of the concerns that came up, and you actually mentioned one, was parking. In New York State law says off-street parking, okay? So I think that's something that needs to be considered. And I agree with you as far as the measurements for myself personally, but I guess my biggest question is, all of these things you're going to write down and send to us so that we have that information?
Yes. I mean, I already redlined and I sent it to this board, and then I think all your tasks with consolidating them all and sending it on to the town board.
Okay, and will we have it before the next meeting?
When is your next meeting?
October 3rd, right?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday. Next Thursday. Yeah, that was, it's up to the board. I mean, I really haven't, when I spoke with Ian, my understanding was that he was thinking that it may be introduced on October 17th, that'd be the next board meeting. So I was kind of thinking maybe by the end of next week.
Okay, that's fine, just, that's what I was going to suggest.
I'd want to review whatever we're submitting to the board, so to second.
But this is an informal review, right?
This is an informal, I should speak to that because we have been invited by the town attorney, presumably with authorization from the town board, to provide, you know, informal input. We can do that individually. I think that'll all be helpful. And John and I can package it up based on his comments and send it along to the town board. The one thing that the town attorney had suggested was to solicit comments about the locations and the...
Yeah, there's numerous on these maps.
And, yeah, to talk about that a little bit and maybe provide some additional comments. But if we can set a schedule, maybe for you all to provide your comments to us by Wednesday, then we can turn that around and consolidate it and get it off to the town board. If you have a preference to see, we will have an opportunity, the planning board will have a formal opportunity to review the draft law once it has been introduced. That's required by the zoning law. And at that point, we would have a full discussion as a board and provide something as a board for the town board to consider.
And I agree with that. I just think that it's helpful to know rather than go back and forth, back and forth, you know, if we have all that information beforehand and come up with something that reasonably matches, you know, what you're going to do. When the formal review comes, it'll be a little bit easier.
Yep.
Understood, yes.
I do have a question. So when they were, when you all drafted this, or when your folks drafted it, did you give them guidance on sort of how many you were going to allow?
One of the members of the board did.
Okay. So the number like three was something that was discussed by the town board, three in town, that upper limit, was that something that y'all decided and gave guidance?
The three in town, no, but there's that whole, there's that whole piece of the micro farms, so basically that means that somebody who is growing it can also sell it on their property and whether or not that's included in the, in the three, and apparently that would be. So if there's three, so if there's two people, so there could be one in town and two micro farmers that are selling it on their property. And those are the details that really have to be worked...
That is not clear in this one.
Well, yes, and I'm not sure that the language in there, and there is a resident who wants to do that, and we've gotten several emails from him and...
But that resident is not located in either an HM or an HC district, which would preclude him from being able to do that, to sell on his property. Whether or not he's growing on his property is something different. But if he's not located in one of the districts that is mapped here, he can't sell, even if he's growing.
Okay, and I don't know what his zoning is.
Yeah, okay.
Do you know who it is?
Or they, yes.
Okay. So...
I mean, he came here for like 10 bazillion amps of solar panels for his own use, so I'm pretty sure we all know who it is, right?
No, no, actually, there's another one.
He likened it to a stand selling eggs or tomatoes.
Right. But yeah, so I don't know, but that, the fact that there's also, that we're also somehow sanctioning or regulating growers is not part of this law. It's not, it's not mentioned, it's not referenced, it's not defined, it's not regulated, it's not legal.
Apparently, you know, the answer that I got, because I thought it should be in the law, was that New York State allows it, but I still think it needs to be in our law because we do have the option of not allowing it, if I understand that stringency idea.
This whole area starts to get into, because it's just like the discussion we had on Keen Stud, you know, if you get, if you fall under ag and markets as a grower in an ag district, there's a different set of rules that'll apply. So I do not know, and I'll be candid with you, and I will defer to Paul, and I'd like to get a copy of the New York State cannabis law to see what each one of these things is. Because as Nina says, there's a bunch of, like, a registered organization with dispensing or a micro business with retail dis... I don't know how they all relate, and if a grower is regulated under ag and markets as well as this, it's a different beast altogether. So I think we need some clarity. We're going to have to do some research and we'll make it available to you because it's, it is unfortunately not clear to me, but it seems like this law was designed to say we're not putting three retail shops, nothing more than three retail shops. But when you read between the lines, if you're growing out in the back 40, you can sell there, but now is it regulated as a farm stand? Because we've got requirements for farm stands. You know, so there's some things that we got to, we got to clear up to make sure that you've got the proper handle on it.
And I would imagine that the town board attorney and town board members are also doing this deep dive into better understanding the regulations so that when you're reviewing these, they don't have the same question.
We are, well, we are trying to do that, yes, we are, and Ian as well. And I think it has to be done correctly.
And not, perhaps not quite hastily.
Exactly.
Yeah. I think you're right.
Well, we go to the maps anyhow.
And one of the maps, actually, one of the places, actually, that's considered a school, it's not marked there, my understanding is, part of Maple Brook is across from Fresh Town.
Yeah.
So, and I don't think that's marked on the map.
And I think the basketball court's next to Conny.
Well, and also there was a big question as far as Fountain Square. Is that a park? Is it not a park? And that came up, that discussion came up, you know. How does that fit in?
One of our suggestions, right, is cemeteries and municipal buildings, right? So...
So the law, Ian said, you'd be better off putting it under the state facility. I'll save all this mark on the map, we down there at state facility.
I mean, it does seem like there's, you know, there's some wisdom in not allowing the retail dispensary. If you're going to treat it like a retail operation, then yeah, of course it should be located in wherever other retail operations are going to be located. But it has lighting requirements and parking requirements and safety requirements that aren't normally, as a matter of practice, required for like a bakery or a deli or something. And so it isn't quite treated like a regular old retail establishment. It should have other requirements attached to it, but the others, you know, maybe it's creating an overlay where if you meet certain, a piece of property meets certain conditions, then you can locate a dispensary there, right? Instead of saying like, oh, well, it's allowed in all HC, all HM, and then carving out little pieces where you can't put it because it's near a church or it's near a cemetery or it's near a municipal building. So like, you know, sort of the proactive planning of this is figure out where you want these to be and then allow them there and put regulations there on that site. Instead of doing it this sort of broad brush, we can do it anywhere in town as long as it's in them, we're going to impose all these conditions of approval, seems onerous for both the applicants and for the board. both the applicants and for the boards reviewing it.
If you need off-road parking, it's not gonna happen here in the Hamlet, that's for sure.
Right.
Well, yeah, that's, that's, that, the big issue with these appear to be the parking requirements.
And lighting.
And, exactly, lighting and safety, access.
That's definitely not gonna happen here in the Hamlet, I mean, because you're not gonna have the parking space.
You know, and do, do you want to allow up to a certain percentage to be on street parking? Well, I'm not sure you want to go that route, but, because...
And actually, the state law says off-street parking. So I don't know if we can allow on-street parking.
Right, so that, that rules out the whole Hamlet area, you're right.
That's what I'm trying to say, you know, it's, that's a problem myself.
So I think it's a more complicated, um, it's a more complicated calculus than just sort of taking a look at this and saying like, what, what should we change about this to make it what we want to be, perhaps pull back and say like, all right, logically, where would be the most likely and most desirable location for these facilities? And then that's right zoning to allow it to be there.
Okay, well, thank you for looking at it, and I look forward to seeing your comments.
Okay. Is there anything else?
So, in terms of a timeframe, what would be a reasonable timeframe for the board to get comments back to John and me? Is next Wednesday sufficient?
Yeah, that's fine.
And I'm willing to give them to you all by the end of the week. Well, willing to get them to the town board by the end of the week.
Their meeting is the 3rd.
Right.
Do you want them on Wednesday, the 2nd?
No, we'll get them...
No, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get them to the town board. We're gonna get them to the town board later, because his conversation with, with Ian was slightly different.
It's gonna be a little bit further out.
And, and really, to Nina's point, we, we gotta do a somewhat credible job so that people understand where we're coming from. We're not, we're not trying to make work, for the sake of making work.
No, we're gonna do this, let's do it right.
That's, thank you.
That's the key, do it all.
Well, and I, I thought, you know, the point Nina made at the end there, in terms of, you know, maybe, maybe you ought to step back and think about it differently, that, that's, that's worth considering, and at least putting it out there for the town board to think about.
But just think of the map, seeing where they can be, right? So pick, pick the places off that map, and we can work it from there.
Right.
If you need off-road parking, it's sure not gonna happen in the Hamlet here, so you're gonna have to find a place outside of the Hamlet where it's gonna work.
So I understand, um, when we make our comments, we're commenting, um, on the letter we've received, which is from AKRF, basically, and then the maps, but there are things that may not be in here. For instance, no more than 15 occupancy at any one time, that sort of thing. We're free to make those comments, but doesn't appear on here as well.
I think some of those are preempted by the state, because I think the state has operational guidelines, because I think they have, like, and, and I'm only going by some of the reviews I've had.
You can pretend you've never...
No, I've never. Um, but, like, they have the double door requirement, you, you have to be buzzed in, you have to, you know, have certain requirements, there's only so many allowed in the purchasing room at a time, and then you have to exit by another door. That's why, you know, the, the, the site plan is an essential element of making these things work. And if you don't have the right site, and I'm just trying to think, where in a Hamlet are you gonna put this?
Uh, you're not.
You're not, you know?
Again, like, so from a practical perspective, these, you know, theoretically, if this was some other facility, this, the local law and the, the zone change, you know, might be worth to sort of really digging into it, but practically speaking, this is not gonna fit. We can't do this in, in the Hamlet, and some of the other HM and HC zones probably also don't have enough...
Gonna put it down in Waseh? I, I don't see where that's gonna work down there either.
Right, so...
Put it next to your house?
Uh, no.
Uh-huh, so, yeah.
It's not our room.
So the threshold issue is like, is this something that we could actually meaningfully implement from a site plan perspective, and, you know, I think we need to talk about that.
Sure, sure. It's that public, go ahead.
We're at the end of a railroad. In other words, we're...
Shane, you gotta go to the mic.
Microphone, microphone.
Even though it's a tiny town divided into six separate hamlets, we are at the end of a railroad, which means that we're totally accessible to anyone who gets off the train. And so it's very important to concern these issues that John is raising, it's essential. I gave a draft of the legal categories, uh, that are being used over, it's on the Connecticut side, so it's a different state apparatus, but they're very careful to have different authorizations for those who grow, those who sell, where to sell, and under what circumstances, and how it's to be pleased. And of course, we're too small to have a police officer within residence. They have a police officer.
Yeah, thank you, Shane.
So, this is, this is what I do, you're gonna give the comments to John and Paul from us by Wednesday, right? So you have just a few days to play with, and, uh, then we'll take it from there. That's all we can do. Take a look at your maps, I got my own opinion where it should be, but, uh, according to the maps, that's that, but I'll put that in the comment.
In the next hour or so.
No, 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 I'm not saying that, I'm saying it should be on your state facility. That's the place where you have the parking, and it's on one of these maps, so, don't even seem sick to me.
They hop on, hop off the train.
Uh, it could be on the train, or go to the distillery, or whatever it may be. Anyhow, um, as that being said, we, we can't really approve the minutes, because the people were here, there's only two of us are here, and you two weren't here, so that's got people on hold.
All right.
That's okay. And other than that, is there anything, anything else we need to discuss?
No.
As I see that, you need a motion for adjournment then.
Can I make a...
Go ahead.
Sorry, I know everybody wants to go. Hi, I'm Charlie Miller. I just wanted to make a, a comment about Silo Ridge, um, and I don't know if this is the most appropriate board, which I think it is, since in a way, you guys are the gatekeeper and only ones who really have a communication with regard to site plan review and approvals. But as a community member, I'm very confused as to what was approved, what's been built, this was mentioned earlier, and what is going to then be built, and I'm sure that a lot of other people in our community feel the same way. I want to correct the, Patrick, who I guess is maybe the attorney or the engineer...
Engineer.
Engineer. Mentioned 245 approved units, I believe the board has realized that only 220 units are approved. I believe that's the case, so I just...
Only 220 have a part of Phase 1. When they, when Silo talks about Silo, they talk about the overall Silo, so if you add Phase 2, it would be 245.
But Phase 2 hasn't been, except...
Hasn't been approved yet.
Hasn't been approved. So I just want the record to reflect that this board acknowledges there are 222 approved units in that, in that facility. There's also, I, maybe it's Phase 2 or 3, that is the vineyards that's across from Delverge Hill. As a community member, and a lot of my friends who live there would like to know if that's actually gonna be built or not. There's just a lot of questions, and I don't know how the community is actually able to ask them. I think it's fantastic that there's new management there, um, but I think that you guys are the only ones who can sort of have those...
Well, you can ask any question you want during a public hearing.
You can also email us any questions you have, and then we can, we'll ask on your behalf, right? And everybody should understand that, right? Like, we have an open channel, um, you, everybody has our emails, send us emails, and if you want us to ask questions, we're happy to.
Okay, I mean, I think that, look, Silo Ridge contributes a significant amount of money to our tax base, it's really fantastic. I was a little concerned to hear like 10-year time horizon, um, I don't know about other people, but it would be lovely if it like started to wrap up, but it sounds like there's gonna be significant changes there. I don't, that was what I took away from what they said, so...
Charlie, I agree with you completely, that's why I said to the gentlemen that they should, we were all talking about this, new people, new, I don't know, I'm only here since January. At, the most people you talk to in this town think Silo is the whole damn thing. They need to tell us what it is, so we can have it on tape and have people see it, so I can say to people, no, that's not Silo, this is Silo. It's gonna be much better for everyone all around if it's out in the open.
I agree. Everybody I talked to, like, feels there was, it was supposed to be one thing, it became something else, and I think it's actually something else, you know? So, um, I think it would go a long way for everybody to understand what is.
It sounds like they're redoing their master plan, so maybe there's an opportunity here when that gets done for like a community presentation. I'm sure they'd be happy to do it, right? Get everybody in the room, right? Like, just so that everybody kind of understands, you know?
Listen for the open.
Yeah, what's going on.
It's a good idea.
Let's, let's have a little mystery.
Any other comment? As that being said, you need a motion for adjournment.
I move adjournance.
Call in favor?
Aye.